Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Candidate Forum for Fresno County Supervisor, District 3. My name is Danielle Bergstrom. I'm the Executive Director and Managing Editor of FresnoLand. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan newsroom here in Fresno dedicated to making policy public. We are co-hosting this candidate forum tonight with three different organizations: the League of Women Voters, the Matty Institute at Fresno State, and Valley Public Radio. And we want to make sure that voters always have access to free and informational public education that is not biased in any way. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague Blake.
Thank you, Donnie. Good evening, everyone. I'm Blake Zianti. I'm the Executive Director of the Matty Institute. And like my colleague Donnie said, we're here to ensure that we have an open dialogue with both of the candidates who are here with us tonight. We're so appreciative of their time. So with that, I'm also going to turn it over to the League of Women Voters to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Sue Goldman, and I am the Vice President of Voter Services for the League of Women Voters. And for those of you that don't know, we are a nonpartisan organization that focuses on not only voting rights and voting education, but just promoting good government. So we're pleased to be part of this presentation.
Yes, and our discussion tonight is going to be moderated by Dr. Tom Holyoke from Fresno State. Tom Holyoke is a professor of political science at Fresno State, where he has taught for 18 years after receiving his doctoral degree at George Washington University in Washington, DC. He's a specialist in American politics, especially interest groups and lobbying, as well as Western water policy. He's the author of four books, numerous journal articles and editorials, and very much enjoys chances like this to help educate the public about important elections. Tom will maintain control over the forum from start to finish. He's met with the candidates, who have all agreed to the rules. Neither of them have seen or reviewed tonight's questions. So I'll turn it over, without further ado, to Dr. Tom Holyoke.
Thank you very much, although I believe I am mic'd myself. So the first thing I would like to do this evening, of course, thanking our wonderful sponsors, but of course, I would like to introduce the people that we're all really interested in tonight. We are joined tonight by Mr. Sal Quintero, who is currently the Fresno County Supervisor, serving District 3, seeking a third term, and he previously served on the Fresno City Council. We also have with us this evening Fresno City Councilman Luis Chavez, who grew up in southeast Fresno and is a proud graduate of Roosevelt High, Fresno City College, and Fresno State University. We are also joined by our two journalists tonight, who will be asking the questions. We have Omar Rashad from FresnoLand, and we have Kerry Klein from Valley Public Radio. Also, just like to note for the audience, and since the couple of the rules here, after each question is asked, the candidates will have two minutes to respond. And I have been asked to do timing, so I will keep time with a timer. At 30 seconds, I will put up the three fingers, three for 30, and then at the end, just the fist. And we ask everyone to respect the time limits. If anyone feels the need, a rebuttal will be allowed, although that rebuttal will only be 30 seconds. And we will, most of our questions tonight will come from our reporters here. Omar, I believe you first, then we're ready to go.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tom. This first question is for Supervisor Quintero. In February, the Board unanimously approved a general plan that calls for new development along the San Joaquin River Corridor and another new town off the 180 near Wonder Valley. How will the county pay for infrastructure and find water rights to support these new developments? And why is the county getting in the development game now when it's been out of it for 15 years?
Thank you very much for the question. I can tell you that this planning process that we've been talking about, the general plan, has gone on for quite a while. And it started off with getting to a point where we needed help, and we admitted that. So we had to hire a group of consultants to come and help us move it along and bring it to fruition. So that was one part of it. The second part, in terms of the development business, the growth is what it is in Fresno County. We're having a lot of families and business inquiries about coming to Fresno County, and we're seeing the growth, because a lot of these companies and families want to come to a place where they can grow and also have some space. And it costs less as well. So that's the reason that we're getting into that kind of growth. I can tell you that there's a lot of plans that have been brought forward already, that some of these developers have talked about building and coming into Fresno County.
In terms of paying for infrastructure?
The infrastructure, we can work on that in terms of our planning process and how we're going to charge for that infrastructure. I'll tell you, the biggest concern that I have personally is with the growth of new housing and business, how are we going to pay for our schools? That's my immediate concern. And those are questions that I'm going to have as we move forward in the process. We're currently getting sued. That'll go to the courts as well.
Understood. Councilmember Chavez, you voted on the City Council to sue the county over this general plan. Could you explain the city's position in yours, and do you think the county should be creating new towns or approving ex-urban developments?
No. In full disclosure, I was one of the council members that did vote to support to sue the county. When you have a general plan that attempts to build a micro-city on the 180 eastern part of the Fresno County, we know what that looks like. We know what that means for the inner core of the city. For folks that don't know out there, this district goes from, all the way from American Avenue, 99, on Shields, shoots all the way east to First, and then all the way north to Shaw. So it's the inner core of the city. We know what happens when we neglect the inner core of the city. I've been walking the district since last April, and I've seen the neglect, and I've seen the wear and tear on our roads, on our infrastructure. There's places that haven't had sidewalks in 50 to 60 years. So what happens when you build leapfrog developments out there is that essentially drains the resources. Right now, we're trying, as a city, to work through what SADA will look like. I can tell you that that cost is going to be upwards of about $900 million to $1 billion. So we have to account for that and do the analysis. The City of Fresno would have been hypocrites if we would have allowed that general plan to go while we're still doing our due diligence on the SADA plan. So everybody that is familiar with planning knows that the infrastructure cost is sewer and water. Where's the water going to come from? Where's the sewer going to come from? The main price tag on that is those sewer trunks and the water lines that go there. To attempt to build a city out there, because folks don't like to build in the inner core of the city, for whatever reason, I think would just be irresponsible. And that's one of the reasons why we decided to sue.
A rebuttal is allowed?
Yes, I also have walked a lot of the downtown area and the district as well. I can tell you that the areas that are in District 3, that are county islands, are Calwa and Mayfair are the two biggest ones. Yet I see the infrastructure needs of repair being on the city part within District 3 that need the repair.
Fresno County wrote a letter in opposition to AB 98, a recently passed bill that requires new warehouses to be at least 300 to 500 feet away from schools, healthcare facilities, and other sensitive sites. The new law is likely to impact the industrial park the county is planning in southwest Fresno. So Supervisor Quintero, do you think a 300 or 500-foot buffer is enough to protect children and families? And do you feel that the county could or should be doing more?
Okay. I believe that we need to build those facilities further away from neighborhoods. And I'll be a strong advocate for that when the time comes. Even though we approved the plan that we planned, that how the growth should be, how many feet it should be, I believe that working with a lot of our advocate organizations, that we can reach a compromise that'll be a good compromise. But I think we also need to include into the conversation and have them really come forward is the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution District, and talking with those organizations as well.
And Councilmember Chavez, same question for you. What should the county be doing to ensure exposure to industrial sites is mitigated for schools and residential neighborhoods?
Well, I think the City of Fresno is trying to, on itself, trying to reconcile and correct past wrongs. It's no secret that a lot of the warehouses were built in the zip code 9372506. I happen to represent an area that has the largest concentration of food processing and packing houses, so I know what that means for neighborhoods. And I'm very proud of the compromise that we reached with the organization that's been working out there. Leadership for Justice, Building Healthy Communities, and the South Residence by Orange and where the warehouses are. They weren't asking for much. They were asking for filters to help counter the pollution that comes through the generation of those trucks that go through there. We were able to provide sidewalks and a $10 million grant so that those residents could have that, which, by the way, the county is actually holding up, because they went out there and tried to say that if your home doesn't meet code, up-to-date code, you're not eligible for those funds. So to answer your question, no, I don't believe warehouses should be placed right next to a school. We're trying to correct that. But I think for future planning, and I think this is why the general plans are so important, you should have those built in right away, so that you're not dealing with these issues later on down the line.
Both of you have secured funds for Calwa's infrastructure, but let's talk about what you envision the next four years looking like for Calwa, starting with Councilmember Chavez. What specific policies or projects would you bring forward to support Calwa?
Well, I live down the street from Calwa, and I actually grew up not too far from there. I grew up by Sequoia Middle School, so I'm very familiar with that neighborhood. I used to go there as a kid to the park that had the old rocket ship. I really saw Calwa neglected for decades. It's one of the oldest neighborhoods that we have in the City of Fresno, and that's one of the reasons why I led the effort to build that health clinic that's going to get opened up here in about a month and a half. We have 56,000 people in that three-mile-square area that don't have access to healthcare. So we're going to bring that to those residents. And for the people that don't have transportation, we're going to provide free transportation for them. But here's an interesting dynamic. I represent the city side, which is to the east of Cedar. To the west of Cedar is Calwa, the county island. That neighborhood has a lot of illegal dumping. It has a lot of areas that don't have sidewalks. It doesn't have lighting at night. It's not safe for people to transit, to drive, to ride their bikes, or for our kids to try to get from one side to the other. So my vision for that is to make a lot of those CDBG grants that it qualifies for, that it has not taken advantage of, and invest them in those neighborhoods to make sure that they have the resources that they deserve.
And Supervisor Quintero, if reelected, what specific projects or policies would you put forward for Calwa?
Well, I can tell you that last year, I met with Congressman Jim Costa, and for the past few years, I've been talking to him about Calwa. And finally, with the redistricting, his seat now is part of Calwa. And so we took a walk through Calwa in the older neighborhood there on the west side of Cedar Avenue, which is county. And he saw the need. He understood what we were trying to accomplish. And I can tell you that he was able to secure $3 million for us to renovate the old neighborhood. And along with that, I was able to get the county to put up another $4 million, which comes up to $7 million. We have already started the process of planning on rebuilding the streets, building sidewalks in those areas, as well as the old ones, curbs, gutters, trimming the trees. We've just done a lot. And as well as working on the alleys that come in there, I know there is a good advocacy group working in there, and they've called us a few times for help. We've been able to help them. So we've done a lot of good work and are already drawing the plans.
Go ahead.
Here's what I think is pretty telling. That area has been eligible for CDBG funds for a very long time, and it has not received those CDBG funds. But here's the part that I think, to me, is more concerning, and I found this out last year. The county of Fresno does not have a brownfield remediation program, which means that there are multiple sites throughout Calwa in the back part on the south side of Jensen that would qualify for a lot of those cleanups, to make them more livable, to remove a lot of the old DDT chemicals, to make sure that the wells are not being contaminated. But it was pretty telling to me, the fact that the county had to come to the city to make sure to utilize our brownfield removal program. We need to change that. We need to get that brownfield remediation dollars in there.
Supervisor Quintero, during our town hall in February, you mentioned the Board's conservative majority is an obstacle to getting some policies passed. What would you do differently if reelected to get proposals you support through the door?
Well, I can tell you that it's been a long learning process, and it's been interesting being on a vote of one vote out of five to try to change things. But as it's come along, I think we've become able to understand each other, support each other's projects in our district. And so with that, working more closely with them and with the rest of the Board, I believe it'll be a lot easier in getting any of the work done that we need, the projects.
And Councilmember Chavez, you've butted heads with some county supervisors. How do you envision navigating the conservative majority if elected? And how would you get support for your proposals?
I'm used to being in that situation. I was the youngest Democrat elected to the Fresno Unified School Board when they went to by district election. So I'm used to working with a conservative supermajority. We got things done on the school side. We made some investments. And I'm already doing some of that work. Couple of months ago, I worked with Supervisor Magzik on that intersection. Mininawa went to Larry, that video that went viral, where you had a collision, that it was a near fatal. So what do we do? We got together in the room. We put a four-way stop sign, working with his office. We've also coordinated a lot of the homeless services that we both share jurisdiction with Sunnyside and the City of Fresno. Supervisor Mendez, I think he's probably more of the water ag guru. I've had multiple conversations with him. So I'm pretty good at counting to four at the City Council, and I'll be pretty good at counting to three, because I know what's important to them, and they'll know what's important to me.
Councilmember Chavez, in your current role, you haven't shied from opposing county officials. Right now, we don't have a tax-sharing agreement after the one that lapsed four years ago. And city and county leaders continue to one-up each other, both publicly, privately, on issues where collaboration is just so desperately needed. Why do you think the relationship has been broken for so many years? And what exactly is the path forward?
Well, I used to work at the county. I actually started working in politics when I worked for Susan Anderson back in 2007, 2008. So I understand the county. I understand their role. I understand their charter, and also understand the city side of jurisdiction, and sometimes it's territorial. The whole conversation about consolidation that happened back in the mid-2000s, I was right there in the middle of that. And to answer your question, I think part of it is personalities, but I think the other part is that oftentimes, we seem to see lenses that are like, well, that's not our problem. I think my issue with the county is every time that something happens in the city, it's seen as just a city problem. But at the end of the day, we represent the same residents, right? They don't distinguish if they're a city or a county resident. I get calls all the time from people that live in Calwa on the western side of the county, and we go out and we help them, not because it's my district or my area, but because it's people and residents, and they need help. So I think that is part of it. The dynamic that's happening right now with the MUU, I thought it was pretty telling, where in the past, it was 50/50, the inner core of the city. I have neighborhoods on the outskirts that can't afford to get a sidewalk. They can't afford to get, say, Frau's to school for our kids. And so the longer we keep perpetuating this jurisdictional pettiness, I think the more our residents suffer. But I'm going to change that when I get to the county. I'm very good at collaborating and working with folks, and I'm going to break that. And I really do see myself as that bridge that fills that gap between the city and the county right now.
Supervisor Quintero, city leaders point to a dereliction in duties on homelessness and an overreach on development as some of the reasons that the city and county relationship has broken down. What has changed in your perspective, and what specific things would you do, or have you done, to try to improve the relationship?
Well, one of the things I can tell you, that we have been working very hard on the county side in terms of the homeless issue. We have, I tell people that the county isn't in the building, isn't in the business of building affordable housing or housing for homeless. What we do is we contract out with organizations like RH Home Builders, with Housing Authority, to either remodel old buildings, or buy older motels, or buy empty land and build. And so we've been pretty successful in terms of fulfilling those needs. But the county's main job is providing the health services, the social services for a lot of the homeless. And we have a lot of programs that we have available to assist them through that process. And I see that as I walk through the older neighborhoods. I can tell you, behind community hospitals, apartments that I've run into, that folks are in desperate need of services. And they're not registered to vote, but I still go talk to them. I give them my flyer, and I say, here's my cellphone. Call me. And by the way, I always give my cellphone out, and I return my calls to folks. So those are the things that we advocate and do our best to work with the homeless and to also provide shelter for them.
Have you had any strategies to repairing that relationship between the county and the city? Yeah?
It seems that we did have, when we initially started out, in terms of teaming together with homeless projects, our lead on that one was Supervisor Nathan Magzik, who met frequently with the city on how to address homeless and how we could work together to go to encampments, to let folks know what services we could provide. And I don't know when was our most recent meeting with the city on that.
So Councilmember Chavez, during your tenure at the city, you voted against two housing projects, one affordable for formerly homeless residents, and the other market-rate in an affluent community. The county is clearly in a housing crisis. Could you explain those votes, and what will you do to make sure the county provides more affordable housing?
Sure. The recent project you referenced is the one that's been in the headlines recently. I think, for me, the issue was that it didn't have affordability. I am continuously frustrated at the fact that the affordable housing conversation is only happening in southeast and southwest Fresno. We need to have everybody in the City of Fresno have that located, whether it's northeast or northwest. There is litigation. I want to be very cautious about that, but I'll say just generally, I evaluate projects as they come on a one-to-one basis. I'm very keen on listening to residents, but also on making sure that we're complying with state law, that we're complying with the housing crunch that we are in. But in my district, I can tell you, I have overseen four affordable housing projects that I've shepherded through the process. The recent one, we were able to house 280 senior citizens over at the Fancher Creek Development, and there's 280 more units going up right next to it. To me, that is a no-brainer. I think we know that senior citizens are the demographic most at risk of being homeless just because prices keep going up, because of the lack of stock, the lack of inventory. And I do see, I differ with Supervisor on this, where I think the county does need to provide affordable housing. I think they need to step into that role. The City of Fresno is not, by way of charter, responsible for homeless services, yet we own and operate 900 beds. Why? Because that's what our community needs. The longer we keep denying that, I think the longer our folks are going to be out there on the street. And I do have a goal, and it's a very ambitious goal, of having 1,000 beds for the homeless in the first 100 days. And we get there by actually pooling the money that the city has, and pooling the money that the county has, and joining them together, along with services, includes mental health, substance abuse, and the Section 8 vouchers.
Yes, of course, Supervisor Quintero. You can respond to that, but I'll add to it. In the last five years, just 107 affordable housing units were built in unincorporated parts of the county. And do you think that's enough? And what would you do to make sure that more affordable housing gets built?
Well, first of all, it's never enough. I can tell you that I'm seeing more and more folks on the streets that are homeless, and I just see the numbers increasing. And I know that we're going to have to provide more homeless housing monies, and that the county will have to come and step forward. But I can tell you that also, in terms of providing services for the homeless, is the county of Fresno used $1 million of their American Recovery Act monies to the Pavarello House to expand their kitchen, remodel it, and build a new dining room. More and more, well, in the past, you would see single men and women come for food services at the Pavarello. Now you're seeing families. And we felt that providing those monies for that purpose was meaningful, and helping folks in the immediate need for food. But I believe that as a county, we're going to get together pretty soon and start talking about more the need for affordable housing.
Supervisor Quintero, a recent study from the Fresno Council of Governments found that the county has a $1.7 billion maintenance shortfall for county roads. The study points to logistics industry and industrial agriculture as the main contributors to the decline in road conditions. If reelected, what is your strategy to improve roads? And should taxpayers be footing the bill, or should that be on industrial companies that may be wearing down roads a lot more?
Well, I believe that that cause should be borne in part by those industrial companies, and any new companies that are coming in, where we can put in a formula, that we start charging those companies the additional monies to provide those roads and to work on trying to fix them. And I can tell you that we're also looking at different ways to move our money around and provide those services and fixing those roads out in the county areas of Fresno. Well, they're pretty beat up. You know that. And so that's another thing that, of course, we're looking at. We had limited amount of monies this past budget, because we moved it around to other services. So that's going to clearly be a focus, and we're going to work with our two supervisors that represent the west side of the county.
And Councilmember Chavez, what are your solutions to the county's road maintenance challenges? Do you think industrial companies need to pay more considering their toll on the roads, or should taxpayers be footing the bill in the next version of Measure C?
Well, I can tell you that I authored the Rebuild Fresno Initiative, along with my colleagues. And that was a very concerted effort of investing a lot of our ARPA funding towards those old historic homes, and making sure that they had neighborhoods repaved, sidewalks, curb, gutter, drainage problems that we had where our kids had to walk on the mud going to their schools or going to community centers. That was part of, I believe, the concerted effort, that we need to focus that vision for the county. There are roads that we share. Earlier, I mentioned I share jurisdiction with Sunnyside and with Calwa. You look at one side of the street, and it's the most hilarious vision. If anybody drives on the road on Mininawa and Kings Canyon, and you go south, one side of the street is paved, the city, and the side of the county is not paved, and it's got potholes and things of that sort. We shouldn't have that. To the broader conversation, I think Measure C, that's coming back, this next cycle is going to be key, in making sure that we have a fully funded plan to actually invest in a lot of those streets that we have. That was one of the big sticklers that folks recall from that conversation. The previous Measure C focused so much money on freeways, right? The 168, the 180. We need to flip that and make sure that it invests in those older neighborhoods, so that in 15, 20 years, when we're all gone here, we're not having that same conversation over and over again. If you're going to ask the residents of Fresno County to tax themselves to the tune of 25 or 30 years, billions of dollars, then we actually need to have an actionable plan. And that's what was missing, I believe, from Measure C, that concerted effort on focusing on older neighborhoods. We need to bring that to the county. And not just in Fresno, by the way. Other smaller cities like Parlia, Selma, all the other 14 cities in the county need to have that approach as well.
Supervisor Quintero, Governor Newsom has pointed out, or has pointed to Care Courts, a new system designed to force treatment of people with schizophrenia as a way to reduce homelessness. The county has yet to roll out its approach or apply for funding to expand the number of psychiatric beds. What are you hoping Care Courts will achieve locally? And how will you define success? And what will you do to expand the number of psychiatric beds in the county?
Good question. I serve as a board member of the Behavioral Health Board for Fresno County, representing the Board of Supervisors. And I can tell you that we're already working on that, and it's a slow process, but we need to put, we'll be putting something together. It's been slow. It's like having the first come in and try to take care of as much of other concerns that we have to fulfill before we can get to this, but it's slowly taking shape.
Okay. And Councilmember Chavez, what do you think will be essential in the implementation of the county's Care Court system to make it successful? And how would you guarantee? of the county's Care Court system to make it successful? And how would you guarantee this would happen? And how would you expand the number of psychiatric beds in the county?
We're doing that as a city. I've already given direction to our city attorney's office to draft what that model would look like. I'm a very data-driven person. There are about 800 of those folks in the city. They're designated as chronic homelessness folks, right? They have substance abuse, mental health challenges. They are not themselves, for sure. And so what do we do with those folks? Those are the folks that now PD has to respond, or the sheriff, and go out and approach them because they're having an episode in the middle of an intersection. I said this the other evening, I live close to First and Tulare, and if you go there in about an hour, you'll see a lot of those folks just running through the intersection where you have the shopping centers and the gas station. It's not humane to leave individuals like that out in the street. It does the neighborhoods no good. It does them no good. I think the county needs to, and this will be part of the 1,000 beds, provide those beds, but along with services. There's no reason why we can't pool all of those resources together and provide these individuals that can provide them critical medical help. A lot of those folks, when you go and talk to them, how I have, are in that situation because they don't have access to consistent medication, whether they're bipolar schizophrenic, or they have a number of other disorders. And so they'll go in, get triaged, they'll treat them, and then they're out in the neighborhood, and then they get sucked in back into that life, or they lose their medication, and it throws them into this cycle that keeps perpetuating itself. We do have to be very cautious. We did receive a letter from our friends over at the ACLU on making sure we protect civil liberties, and that's exactly what our legal counsel is working through. But I believe you're going to see the city of Fresno do something along those lines before the county of Fresno does. But here's the ironic part. The county is actually responsible, again, for, you know, health and human services, and here you have the city being at the front end of that conversation. It shouldn't be that way. The county should be leading, and that's what's missing over there.
All right. In the wake of the Supreme Court's Grants Pass ruling, a key systemic issue remains. Supervisor Quintero, where should unhoused people go if there aren't enough beds in homeless shelters? Do you have any plans to increase the number of homeless shelters that is funded by the county? I know Councilmember Chavez has a proposal for that, but...
That's a conversation that we have been talking about a little bit at the county. We're seeing the numbers grow, and even in the county, on the west side of the county, we're seeing the numbers increase for homeless. And what I've seen in working with the other supervisors is that if you've got a problem and you want to address it within your own district, you're able to get a few things done, but once the other supervisors realize it's happening in their backyard, then it's a lot easier to get things done. It shouldn't be that way, but that's how it works. And I just feel that a lot of times that folks say, well, it's a city issue, and the county should be taking care of it. Yeah, I think we all need to work together on that.
Got it. And if reelected, do you have a particular proposal for maybe how many beds you think that number should increase by?
No, I want to really, you know, get into the weeds of the issue, meet with our folks at the county, our social service folks, our public health, and just see how bad it is or what we can do to make it even better.
Got it. Councilmember Chavez, same question to you. You've tossed around the 1,000 number in 100 days. How logistically would you theoretically, you know, make that happen?
Here's how I know it's possible. And it is pretty bad out there. When you talk to a lot of the folks that are homeless, we've done it before. And we've done it before as a city, when the city, you know, when it gets really hot, 105 degrees and up, we actually set up makeshift beds for folks in our community center as cooling centers. When it gets extremely cold, we do that as warming centers. And we have those cottages, you know, ready to go. We have restrooms. We have facilities there. We've counted over 26 abandoned warehouses in the industrial areas that are right now sitting vacant, that nobody's using them. There's no reason why the city and the county can't come together. City brings their social services departments in to provide a lot of the mental health, the psychiatric help, the medication. The city of Fresno comes in with resources, and we're actually willing to be partners in that. That's why you're going to get a lot of those folks off the street. Oftentimes, and I know this for a fact, there are individuals that are not yet ready to come out of the street. They're still stuck in that cycle. But for those folks that can, we should be looking at those options because right now they're just sitting vacant, while there are folks out in the elements, you know, passed out or dehydrated or sick or, you know, sometimes sadly passing away in the area. I work very closely with a lot of the homeless advocates, you know, Des Martinez that does great work. She's very good at coming and yelling at us and elected officials, but I think that's a good thing because she pushes those issues to the forefront. But that's going to be the number one issue that we tackle as a county in the next couple of years because with the Grants Pass ruling, with the Care Courts, and with everything that's coming down now, I think you're going to see an opportunity to do it, but do it right and do it in a humane way, where people are treated with dignity and respect, and we're giving them the help that they deserve.
Now, I'd like to ask about a measure on the ballot this November, Proposition 36, which proposes tougher sentences for certain crimes like retail theft and drug possession. Councilmember Chavez, you've said on the record that you support Prop 36, both of you have. Councilmember Chavez, particularly provisions that also provide for drug rehab services. Tell us more about how you would like Prop 36 to roll out in Fresno County and how you would guarantee that rehabilitation is available and effective.
Well, I see that all the time on the Caesar Chavez corridor. I mentioned this example the other evening, where we have folks that go into Home Depot or even our small businesses and just run out with merchandise. They're actually, you know, doing videos now online. That's not right. There needs to be consequences, and it's not realistic to just jail everybody. In the late 1990s and early 2000s, I sound so old saying that now. I used to actually work and do groups from the old version of the Prop 36 that focus on treatment. So if you got in trouble back then, you went through the court system, and then one of the options that the judge will give you would be, you're either going to go to jail or you're going to get treatment. I think that's what was missing from the Prop 47 conversation, and that's what I'm hopeful that Prop 36 brings, brings that in lieu of a sentence. You actually go get diversion and treatment. I know that works. I used to work in that field, and I think that's what we need to have as a tool in the toolbox, so to speak.
And Supervisor Quintero, you also support the measure and these same provisions. How would you guarantee that these services are available and effective for residents who need them?
You know, one of the things that I look at is that some years back, we had a fellow from Fresno come up with a proposal for, when the crime rate was really high in California, and it was called three strikes and you're out. And sometimes, I mean, I see things that happen, such as a council member referenced along that corridor, because I live close to that corridor, where they just run out with merchandise and all that. They'll get arrested, and to some degree, it's a revolving door in terms of the jail. But I think if we need to look at some parts of how that three strikes and you're out works, and I think we'll really get the attention of the folks that do the crime. And so I'd really like to revisit some of that as well and see how that would get incorporated into the measure.
Well, a follow-up for both of you. How would you actually guarantee that those rehab services are available?
Want to go first?
Yeah, sure. Well, sure. Yeah, I'll go with Councilmember Chavez.
I'm going to go first. Okay. I think we need to fund it. That's the part that is not 100% clear. We had this conversation the other evening where I monitor the grants that come from the state, come from the federal government. I've been very effective at building relationships in Sacramento and DC to bring dollars back here home. And when I see the fact that Fresno County is oftentimes not on the list, sometimes I followed up and asked, why is Fresno County not on the list? And they said, well, the county didn't want to apply for it. $42 million grant, $13 million grant. And I asked, well, why? Well, they didn't want a lot of the strings attached to it, or they just didn't apply. I think we need to have that approach and making sure that Fresno County is getting those resources to our folks. On average, every dollar we send to Washington DC, we only get about 80 cents back. To me, that's just a travesty. And what happens is we have folks that could benefit from services that don't necessarily get that. But that component needs to be funded. If it's not funded, then it's just, you know, a platitude of things we're talking about.
Supervisor Quintero?
Sure. Couldn't agree more with those comments. I can tell you that when I first got to the county as supervisor, I looked around at the different departments, and I said, gee, how come we don't have grant writers? And so I asked around about that, and they said, well, we don't have enough money to hire them or that type of thing. And I said, why don't we utilize what we have in our community, like Fresno State University? I know they have a program there for folks that want to do grant writing and come up with a program that we could partner with the university to search for those grand dollars in Sacramento or in Washington. And at the same time, to look at those monies for which department we can best utilize them for, is there money for social services? Is there programs that we can apply for? And those are the things that we see missing. I can tell you that one of our, and that it works, of course, we have in our Public Works Department, we have a person that's always looking for grant money, and that's how we've been able to get some of those monies in. I believe we can do the same thing with our behavioral services, our social services, and applying for those monies.
Moving on to in-home care workers, Councilmember Chavez, do you have any thoughts on how in-home care workers are compensated on the county level? And what have your conversations been like with those workers?
It's really embarrassing, the way that those folks have been treated, for them to make $16.60 an hour, when we know that there are other industries, fast food industry, that's now making $20 an hour. I think that's one of the reasons why they endorsed me in this campaign, because the fact that they haven't had a raise in eight years, I think, is pretty telling. That issue might be a little bit more personal for me. My mother was a home care worker, and so I understand the challenges that they face every day. But the part that I think is more frustrating is when you look at where the pots of money come from. It's a combination of federal, state, and local dollars. The Fresno County portion is about 16% or so. That's 16 cents. And the fact that last year, we had over 600,000 hours that were not used because we know that the need is there, I think it's pretty telling on how unappreciated those folks feel in our community. And it's frustrating because, you know, when the pandemic happened, they were literally the people that, you know, the most vulnerable were depending on. They had to go in and provide services, make sure their medication was taken, make sure that their appointments to their doctors were kept, make sure that they had food, they're cooking. And so to me, that's one of the issues that is very important to me. We're all going to, at some point, be in that age range, and we're all going to need that help. If we don't make those investments right now, this health crisis, because I do see it as a health crisis, is going to exponentially even grow bigger. And right now, we see that. Folks that are leaving the profession because they can go make $20 by working at a fast food restaurant. The human services, I think, job oftentimes doesn't get appreciated and respected, and we need to change that at the county.
Got it. And Supervisor Quintero, same question to you. In terms of how in-home care workers are compensated on the county level, do you think there's a need for change on that?
Sure. We've been negotiating with one of the home care worker units, and we've had ongoing meetings prior to getting into negotiations with their representatives. And some of the care workers, you know, we'd meet individually. In my office, one of the representatives would come in with two or three, and we'd talk. And my response was always to them is that, you have my support. You have my vote. You have my vote. My father was a union worker, so I knew exactly what was, you know, how it hurts when you can't get a raise or you can't get more monies. I said, just find two more votes, but I'm there. Whatever the proposal is, I am there. I know you've been neglected. Now, through our negotiations that we've had, the last proposal that the county made to the group that we're negotiating with now was three months ago, and we have not had a response from their negotiators. We had a meeting, two meetings ago, actually, where on the agenda was an agenda item that stated an explanation of how the monies flow to pay the workers. Three folks showed up that are healthcare workers. They didn't even know about the three-month proposal that had been waiting to hear for three months. So we're waiting. I mean, we're going to negotiate, but it's been three months.
Can I just say something on that end, just 30 seconds? It's been eight years since those folks have gotten a raise in Fresno County. And you see a lot of these folks now leaving, and the last proposal that the county put on the table, by the way, was increasing their pay by a couple of cents, and at the same time, taking away their health coverage benefits at a time when we just came out of the pandemic, at a time when a lot of people have pre-existing conditions. And so that's one of the reasons why you've seen this stalemate, but it's been eight years since those folks have gotten a raise. To me, that's just completely unacceptable.
That flows into the next question. Supervisor Quintero, where should their pay be at, in your mind?
My personal feeling, it should be $20 or more.
And, you know, we were talking earlier about there being a conservative majority. I'm not sure if that's what's being worked up against in this particular scenario. How much is negotiating for what you think should happen? How much of that is, you know, part of your role? Do you see as part of your role, especially if reelected?
Well, I'm not going to get into numbers or anything because we're negotiating. So that remains to be seen when we come to the table again.
Got it. And Councilmember Chavez, you know, we're already talking about sort of working up against maybe some disagreements on the county level. If elected, how would you be able to maybe secure, you know, a raise for in-home care workers? Yeah, yeah, just considering the challenges that...
I think those folks for the work that they do should be commensurate to, you know, what they bring to the table. They should be upwards in the $25 to $30 range for them, just because of the dynamics of the job that they make. Here's what's interesting. Every year, you go through the budget cycle, right? County has two different budgets. One ends in June, the other one, because it's tied to the federal dollars, gets revamped around September or so. And, you know, $5.2 billion, the fact that the county only has about 30 minutes of public comment to go through a budget of $5.2 billion, when the city of Fresno is a quarter of that or half of that, and has a whole month of hearings. I think that's one of the reasons why there's a disconnect between elected officials over there and the community at large and the people that work for them, because it's not just the home care workers. It's the social workers that work in the foster care system that have long been neglected and disinvested. And so that needs to change. I think the county should have a month-long also hearing to have people come and give their input, have it be as transparent and as public possible. If that's really what the case is and the resources are limited, have folks the ability to examine that and scrutinize it and see if maybe we can move dollars from this facility over here. The ARPA funding that was allocated to the county was spent on revamping a lot of buildings. But what about the people that deliver the services in those buildings? To me, that was the part that was more frustrating for that conversation that happened with those funds. And, you know, it's like that old saying, don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value. That's the same case with the county.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
One of the comments that I'd like to make is that I can tell you, as we go through our budget process, during the meeting with the public there, at the end of the process, as we get the presentation and that type of thing, the chairman always asks, is there any comments from the public? That's a question you naturally ask. This year, I believe there was like three people that stood up and spoke. That was it. Three to five people.
Another aspect of this, Councilmember Chavez mentioned earlier, is that he received the endorsements of SEIU 521 and also SEIU 2015. Just curious, Supervisor Quintero, when was the last time you were able to meet with SEIU union, and did those conversations with them break down at any point?
Well, the last time I met with them was probably first part of the year with a representative and two or three of the healthcare workers in my office. And, you know, I listened to what they had to say, and my brother was a healthcare giver as well for my mom. And so I understand that. But I told them as well, find me two more votes. I'm there. And what I... And what I what I feel is that a lot of the their representatives do not go back and tell their full membership where we are and what the comments were.
Got it. And Councilmember Chavez, in securing the endorsements of SEIU 521 and SEIU 2015, were there any particular promises you made both those unions?
Yeah, to treat them with respect and dignity and meet with them on an ongoing basis. I think I see myself as as that person. I do that for the working men and women that serve our community at the city level. Oftentimes, as an elected official, you can take the approach that you're just going to rely on what the administration, you know, presents to you with data or numbers or figures or statistics. But as an elected official, you should be doing your due diligence. You'll find me a couple of days out of the week, just going out and touring facilities, you know, that, you know, our folks work in, because I want to see firsthand what's going on. How many bus routes are leaving today? How many passengers are we carrying? How many sewer lines do we have to work on? We should be doing that at the county. So I did, you know, work with our folks over at SEIU, and I told them, I'm going to treat you with dignity and respect that you deserve because you take care of the most vulnerable populations. And the fact that, you know, folks don't want to meet with them, I think, I think it's quite frankly, you know, a slap in the face to the folks that do a lot of the work. And they feel like that, because I've been at the union hall when they relayed messages that supervisors have made. And it's frustrating because they're, at the end of the day, they're they're very good-hearted, kind people. They don't do this job to get rich, obviously. They do it because they care and they want to be a caretaker for people that are in bad situations, that have disabilities or, you know, you know, injuries that prevent them from from going, whether they're blind or deaf or or artistic or have cerebral palsy. To me, we should be valuing those people. We should, that's the minimum, meeting with them. You should be an advocate for those social services on that county board. And maybe I'm a little fired up because I'm very passionate about that, but that's what my approach is.
The California Department of Justice is suing Fresno County over Measure A, which voters approved in March. Measure A moved the elections of Fresno County Sheriff and District Attorney to the gubernatorial cycle instead of the presidential election cycle, as required by state law, AB 759. Supervisor Quintero, you're endorsed by Fresno County Sheriff John Zanoni, Fresno County DA Lysus McCamp, also the Deputy Sheriff's Association and DA Investigators Association. What's your feeling on this dispute between the county and the state? And have you made these people and organizations any promises in terms of your stance on county law enforcement actions, elections?
No promises.
And what's your and what's your state, what's your stance on the the dispute between these election cycles?
To me, it just, it was just to bring everything together in under one election time and and it would save some monies at that. Folks had their different take on why it shouldn't be done that way, but they're just, it just seemed a lot better as far as the process goes, to me.
And Councilmember Chavez, what's your stance on the county locking horns with the state over law enforcement elections?
You know what was interesting about that conversation? That the county found resources and money to fight a state law on that end, yet they they failed to recognize the name change of Yocuts Valley out there. They fought the federal government. They also fought the renaming when the city decided to rename the Kings Canyon corridor to Caesar Chavez. And to me, I think those priorities are are out of whack. But to your point, I think those elections should be during the presidential cycle. And I'll give folks a very specific statistic. During the primary of of our race here, we had a 19% turnout in the primary for a presidential race. Now, in the in the November election, we're expecting upwards of 60 to 70% turnout. I think that's good for democracy. I think that's good for the local democracies, have more people weigh in on who we are actually giving the absolute power to jail you and put you in prison, you know, maybe for a long time. But to have a small group in a gubernatorial primary decide that type of of a task and a job, I don't think that's good for our local democracy. And I think it is a good thing that we're going to have it in November. I know that Attorney General now has taken matters into their own hands, but I think we should never be afraid of people participating in our democratic process. And the way I saw it, it was an attempt to kind of subvert that desire for people to engage and be involved and see who their top law enforcement person is going to be and who their prosecutor is going to be in in the county.
I'd like to comment on that. You know, the, and it's just going back in in time a little bit, you know, my mom, when I turned 18, she said, go register to vote. But she was always, even though she was an immigrant here, she believed in the system. And she said, you know, if you care enough about your your country and the laws, you're going to go and vote. And and it's sad when when you're eligible and able to go register and vote, that you don't vote. And we should take it upon ourselves as our responsibility. And so I believe that if you care, you need to vote.
All right. Moving over to mobile food vendors, Councilmember Chavez, within the city of Fresno, you've been a proponent, you've been a proponent of making work safer for mobile food vendors, including equipping carts with security cameras. The same risks exist for vendors outside of city limits. As a county supervisor, would you also try to increase safety for these workers? And if so, how?
Yeah, absolutely. I think when you when you meet with them and you hear their story and, you know, simple statistic that'll give you some insight as to how big our our workforce is for small business owners. When the tragedy happened and the mobile food vendor was gunned down in in my district, I went out and I met with with the families and I met with those folks and they shared their stories. And oftentimes, they were seen as as living in the shadows because they were even scared of, you know, code enforcement, they were scared of our police department. They didn't see the city as a partner in their small business endeavor. And so what I did is I formed the very first across the state of California Mobile Food Vendor Association and brought them under the umbrella of a governmental entity that offered the protections, that offered the benefits of them being able to apply for grants. And we did that because they're hardworking people. They're oftentimes so proud that they don't want to go and ask for social services. They don't want to ask for, you know, government programs, even though they might be eligible or some might not. But they pride themselves in what they do every single day. And I think as a city, we should honor that. And again, it goes back to treating people with the respect and dignity that they deserve. And I think the county should have done that, too. What you'll see is a different approach from the city and the county, where the county actually cracked down with their code enforcement folks on people that were parked outside of the Cherry Auction at the behest of the Cherry Auction folks that didn't want them competing with them. We should be figuring out a way for them to come under the umbrella of the county. And the last thing I'll say is, right now, we've done a lot of resources for them. How great would it be for them to have a one-stop shop where county public health will be able to go and inspect their cars and make sure they pass health standards and have them be outside of those shadows, where they oftentimes don't feel part of that? That's one of the projects that I'm going to work on at the county when I get there and making sure that they feel welcomed into the government.
And for, oh, I I've got one for you right here, Supervisor. Not only is safety a concern, but a grand jury report showed that a shortage of food inspectors is creating a backlog for new mobile vendor permits from the County Department of Public Health. Is it a priority for you to make this process easier and safer for these workers? And if so, how?
Absolutely. And I'd like to back up a little bit about the reference made to the folks that were selling outside of Cherry Avenue. I'm the one that asked for that assistance. I asked our folks from Health Department to show up and also from our business license department to go and and basically go over with these folks the process of what it would take to fill out to get a business license, so that they would be able to not provide food, you know, being in fear of of getting caught or anything like that, but showing them what needed to get done in order to get licensed. And not only that, there was a safety issue because it's a narrow street along Cherry Avenue. Cars were parking on one side with families running across the street. And then you have a lot of cars going down Cherry, going to the Cherry Auction. So it was a big safety issue. We asked the Highway Patrol to help us as well, the Sheriff's Department, but we also brought in the educational component, and we did that for three or four weekends. And I can tell you, even in my, the district that I represent, I mean, I see some food vendor trucks that just say cash only. And so I'm thinking, well, does this person have a business license or or how are they paying their their taxes, you know, reporting their taxes and that type of thing? So it's a, it's a, it's a lot of work in in monitoring, so.
Got it. And in terms of attempting to potentially address the backlog for health inspectors on the county level, is that something that you think you see yourself as taking as a priority if?
We've already discussed that. As as supervisors, we've talked about it in in closed session, in terms of what some of the needs are, not only that, but in other departments of what we need to to look at down the line and what we need to do to correct it.
Got it. And so if for.
30 seconds after that, Omar.
Definitely. For for any voters who maybe really pay attention to the subject, maybe they're small business owners, what would you say to them if they're curious about how you would address that particular issue on the county level?
I would ask them to call me, because one of the important things of of being an elected person is being a good listener. And some of the best ideas come from the folks that are actually doing the work. And I would incorporate that.
And Councilmember Chavez?
Yeah, I was going to time in. I think the the grand jury report that came out that identified the the lack of funding and investment in the public health department by way of not hiring more health inspectors that are responsible for going out and inspecting restaurants, food vendors, trucks, things of that sort, I think, was pretty telling. The the specific number was that they hadn't hired anybody since the 1990s, when the county of Fresno has exploded in population. And again, I think that's that's part of being an elected official. You should be vigilant about that, especially things that affect the public health. It's important to have somebody there that needs to address those challenges.
And our next question, we've touched upon a little bit already, but I want to put a finer point on it, extreme heat. So Councilmember Chavez, we're seeing more heat waves locally influenced by climate change. If elected as supervisor, what would you do to alleviate those impacts on residents from cooling off to reducing energy costs?
I think one of the things I'm most proud of is the the work we've done with all of the the new development that comes by way of of my district. I always ask them the question, is it is it going to be LEED certified? Is it going to have green energy amenities? I think that conversation needs to be pushed. It's going to be a combination of things. I think it starts with the general plan and outlining and making sure that we're growing up and that we're, you know, ensuring that those transportation hubs aren't are installed. Part of my district includes the Bus Rapid Transit System that runs through the corridor all the way to downtown and up north to River Park. Folks are now using the bus more. Why? Because it comes every 10 minutes. That helps reduce greenhouse emissions. The bike lanes that, you know, we've worked really hard to install and making sure that it's not just about pedestrian safety, but it's also about reducing, you know, the barriers to folks trying to get from one place to another. I think it's going to be an all hands on deck and all of the above approach. But even with the new homes that are being built, when you look at the products that are coming online now, you know, most of them now are having solar. The big investment that we've made as a city is the Purple Pie, which is the repurposed water that now is used for irrigation purposes. All of those measures, I think, have been missing from the county, because oftentimes they don't see that as a as a problem. But I agree. I had, I don't ever recall a Fresno Fair opening that was 104 degrees out there. And even today, I was out walking today, it was 100 degrees out there. The heats have been getting so unbearable to now where we have senior citizens that are having to decide whether they pay for their PG&E, which has doubled or tripled, or they buy medication. It's all related, and it all has to do with, you know, us being a product of our environment. But as policymakers, I think we need to be more vigilant and really be pushing initiatives that reduce those greenhouse emissions here for pollution and other health-related incidents that we have related to that.
Supervisor Quintero, what do you think your responsibility is to protect residents and workers from heat waves and escalating energy costs? And what would you do differently in a third term?
One of the things that I'd like to focus on with that, as we're seeing the temperatures stay the same and get or get worse, is that we work more closely with our health department and and see what what ways we can come up with or ideas to alleviate the temperatures in the in the industries, the different industries that we have, the housing, just from A to Z, and take a look at that, along with our public works. And also to look for for grant dollars, which we don't mention enough of.
It looks like we're only one or two minutes ahead of schedule, but right now, we'll hand it off to Dr. Holyoke for any community questions.
Yes, thank you. And you guys have been really wonderful about the time, so we got through a lot of material. We do, however, have some community questions, and these questions were submitted in advance. We have five of them, and we will go on with the same rules. Let me ask this first question, which was submitted by Alexandra. What are your plans to renew Measure C? How do you plan to engage the community in this process to ensure all county residents have a say in our transportation future? And Mr. Quintero, why don't you answer first?
I'm the the county representative on the Fresno Council of Governments. That was on our agenda a couple of meetings ago in terms of the renewal of Measure C. And basically, we had, I believe, the one of the advocacy or a couple of the advocacy groups that showed up and start talking about the history of what happened last time, when folks got up from the table, committees were formed and got up from the table and walked away. And of course, they're concerned that this doesn't happen again. But how are we going to get get to to make it work and everybody to buy in? And basically, in fact, it was Mayor Asbeck from Clovis that made the comment. She said, she says, you know, I just want everybody to understand, all we're here today is called, is to move it forward to go to the Transportation Authority for comment and discussion. And with that, you know, everybody said, yeah, that's 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 agreed upon, we'd have to do that. And they said, let's just get past this tonight, and then we'll start doing the the heavy lifting at the other end. And everybody seemed to be satisfied with that, but it was a, at least I felt, it was just the right, the right time for a good start, where we can hopefully come together. And the advocacy group did mention, you know, when they formed the committees, about half the committees stood up and walked out after the first couple of meetings, as you're well aware. And anyway, that hopefully will have a different outcome. The proposal, I thought, is they they, everybody sit down and look at the original intent of Measure C and even look at that and say, okay, let's break it down by percentages. How much can we put into fixing roads in the rural areas? How much can we put into other projects? And go from there.
Councilman Chavez?
Yeah, I I mentioned this the other evening. I met with the committee that was spearheaded by the Chamber of Commerce about two and a half years ago. They asked me for my thoughts. I told them that their outreach needed to be very, very extensive, very, very robust. And I know that because when I was on the school board, I was the liaison as a as a board member for the bond that we passed to fix our aging schools, our aging infrastructure. And I know that in order for a community to be willing to tax themselves in the amount of billions of dollars for 25 or 30 years, you have to get buy-in from the residents. You have to get buy-in from everybody that is involved. Are you going to get to 100% consensus? No, that's virtually impossible. But I really believe that the outreach was not done, and that's one of the reasons why we ended up in a situation where at the last minute, there were all these modifications being made and trying to accommodate folks at the last minute. And and I think people saw it as, you know, too much at stake to just let this pass. So I think we have an opportunity to to chart something new with a new vision. And we really do need the county and the cities working together. I plan to be more engaged this time around and making sure we're building that broad coalition. But I think the focus needs to be on the inner core of the city, those older neighborhoods from the Fresno High, the Tower area, the Huntington neighborhoods, the Calua neighborhoods, the Mayfair neighborhoods. If you don't give them a sense that you're actually telling them, you are going to now have curbside gutters, you won't have drainage problems, your kids will be able to get safe to school, they're not going to vote for it. And that's going to be, you know, at the expense of of kids, of pedestrian safety and of additional accidents and more than likely deaths in the future. So we have to really make sure that the engagement is real. I know oftentimes, it's frustrating to work with advocate organizations. I've been there, but I think at the end of the day, they mean well. They bring up great points, and they do need to be at the table. Otherwise, it's going to fail again.
Our second question comes from Ashley. What do you think are the biggest problems impacting children in Fresno? And how would you address them? And Mr. Chavez, we'll start with you.
Well, I think one of the biggest challenges we have is our educational system. I think for too long, we've, you know, neglected children. I think for too long, we've neglected children in the urban core of our area. We oftentimes want to just say that we're going to build magnet schools or specialty schools. But I think every kid deserves a good quality education here in our community. I say that as a former teacher, as a former board member. But the other thing, and I thought that was something that was pretty frustrating and quite frankly motivated me to run, was the crisis we had with the foster care system here locally. I hate that that image of children sleeping on the floor gets used at conferences across the nation now on how to not treat foster kids. You know, my family and I have been foster parents for six years. I know the challenges of children that are in that system, but the system is structured against them. We need to revamp it, modernize it, and make sure that those children are getting all the support services that they need. Otherwise, we're going to keep having this conversation every other year. And the images that came out of that are just horrendous. We shouldn't have that in Fresno County. We're not a third world country. And I'm hoping that when I get there, we can actually fix that system and make sure that more foster parents are now in the queue, because we have over 2,000 kids right now in the foster care system that desperately need a safe place to go to. And we haven't had the investment and the concerted effort of the county board of supervisors to support them.
Mr. Quintero, please, you have two minutes as well.
Okay. Well, I can tell you that we keep bringing up all the bad things about the foster system. What is never really mentioned, I mention it, is the person in charge of the program is no longer with the county. Changes have been made with the images that was referenced earlier about kids sleeping on tables and floors and that type of thing. That's all gone. And the hard work has been put into that program, that we have what we call the MOD-C, which is now we provide beds, laundry, food, services, and it's completely changed. And I can tell you that the programs that are in place now, that we've put together, as well as the drop of 64% of children entering foster placement, it goes from 112 to 58 now. And with that, I can tell you that a lot of other communities, cities in the state of California are now looking at Fresno as a model on how they can copy what we're doing.
Thank you. Okay. Our third question comes from Andrea. Many people in Fresno County are affected by our warming climate and air quality issues. What initiatives will you support to help lower the greenhouse gases that contribute to these problems? And Mr. Quintero, it's your turn to start.
Okay. I believe that what we need to do is work more closely with our other agencies, like the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution District, worked with those, and also work more closely with the state of California, see what suggestions they might have. And basically, as we all know, we live in a basin. It's just not, it's never going to be 100%. But we need to do that. It's just not going to continue to get better. If anything, it's going to get worse, but we've got to do what we can to control it.
Mr. Chavez?
I want folks to visualize, and I took a picture of it when it happened. When the pandemic happened and everybody was at home, I went out and I took a picture of the Sierras. You could actually see the Sierras during that time period. It is possible for us to have a place where the air is cleaner, where we don't have as much pollution, where people that live in South Fresno don't have a lower life expectancy than people that live in North Fresno. But it's going to take hard work, and it's going to take somebody that can outline a new vision. And a new vision for how our homes are constructed, how our roads are revamped to encourage more transit-oriented development, the type of product that we offer to our folks. The push to do a lot of the green energy has been missing in the Central Valley. And we are now starting to really wake up and see what the benefits of that could be, from placing chargers across the city and the county, to encouraging people to buy green vehicles. We now own a plug-in hybrid, and that is, to me, one of the best solutions we could have, because I don't remember the last time that my wife went to Go Fuel, because we charge it at home and you get to drive 40 miles. But the reason we were able to see that beautiful view of the Sierras is because there weren't a lot of those vehicles polluting out there, our environment. And I really do feel that we can get to that point. Is it going to happen overnight? Absolutely not. I know that. I'm realistic. I understand what that entails. But you have to have policymakers that are pushing this conversation to the forefront, because to me, that's what these elections are about. It's about the future. It's about the future of our kids. It's about what we leave behind them. And I really believe that Fresno is at that cusp where we can actually outline something that works and makes our people healthier and not have a lot of the mortality rates that we have here locally.
Everybody.
Sure.
You know, one of the hardest things that I can tell you, this is having served in government, and any elected will tell you, is to try and get 100% buy-in from the public, no matter what laws you come up with. And try to make changes, the public has to buy into it. And even what you're seeing, even on the national level, to buy electric cars, what are the numbers on that in terms of the changes that we're seeing? It's just a very difficult thing. And yes, it's going to take a lot of time.
All right. Our next question is from Miguel. It's a different kind of question. So politicians have a dual role of representing their constituents, but also leading based on their knowledge of issues and your own moral compass. How do you find the right balance between these aspects of the job? And can you provide any specific examples? And I think, Mr. Chavez, it's your turn to go first.
Sure. I've said this before, whenever I've been elected, and I've never been able to get 100% of the people to vote for me. It's always been 50 plus 1, 50, 60 something percent. But even those people that don't support me, they call, I'm going to help them. And I'm going to help them because I represent them as well. So I think you have to have that approach as an elected official. They don't elect you just so you can interject your own opinions and biases. I have mine, everybody has theirs. But you try to build consensus as much as possible. And I think that's one of the things that I've been really effective at. I build broad coalitions. There are a lot of issues that are not partisan. Education is not partisan. Public safety is not partisan. Economic development is not partisan. So I tend to live in those spaces. And there's an old saying in politics that says that somebody that disagrees with you 90% of the time is still 10% your friend. I tend to live in that 10% and make sure we get things done in that space. But one of the things I do, and I pride myself, is I actually set up neighborhood subcommittees where I communicate with them on a daily basis. Every time during the budget, I go and I check with them. We meet out at the Mosquilla Center. We meet at Senior Citizens Village. We meet in the Calhoun Park. And I get their input. And I want to know what's going on in the neighborhoods. That's one of the reasons why we built that health clinic out in Calhoun, because I found out through them that we had 56,000 people that don't have access to medical services out there. That's one of the reasons why next week, we're getting ready to announce a Safe Process School initiative on the corner of Butler and 8th Street, to make sure that those kids can get across the street when they're going to Wenchell or Sequoia Middle School. So yeah, we have our own bias and our own thoughts, but we represent the people and we serve at the people. And I'll close with this. I think people think that running for office is oftentimes glamorous or sexy, because people are putting a mic in your face. But to me, there's nothing more humbling than going up to complete strangers' doors and asking them to support you. And you build those relationships. And I've done that, and I've kept a list of their needs in their community.
Mr. Quintero?
Yes. I've always felt that the most important part of being an elected official is to be a good listener. And even when there's tough issues, no matter how tough they may be, or how strongly you disagree with some of the people that you represent, it's still important that you get their input. And one of the things that I've learned over the years is that we're able to agree to disagree. And whether we're on a different side of the fence, you're never going to get 100% of your constituents happy, no matter what the issue may be. It's not going to be 100%. But even though on the times we disagree, we're able to come back and work together on the next issue. And that's why I believe communication is really important. And I'm not elected to pass what I believe in. I'm elected to what's going to be for the best of the community. And that's why I return my calls.
Our last question of the evening comes from Karen. If elected, will you seek to overturn the Parents Matter Act, which was adopted by the board? And I think, Mr. Quintero, I think it's your turn to go first.
Sure. I voted against it. I was on the short end of that. Voted against it. I felt that it shouldn't be a committee to dictate to families what their children should read or not read. It should be the parents. But it was, again, a 5 to 2 vote, I mean, 3 to 2 vote. So I didn't agree with it, but we're in the process.
Mr. Chavez?
Yeah, that is one of the stupidest things that came out of the county. And I told the person that proposed that to their face. I don't think we should ever be in the business of dictating what people can read in a public library. Full disclosure, I often found myself as a kid in libraries and sometimes lived in them. I think they should be informative. I think they should be a little bit provocative. I think that sparks intellectual curiosity. And we should leave that role to train professional librarians that have gone to school and actually studied what a lot of these Hall of Records, which I see them as, should house in there. I think it's very dangerous when, because of the political climate, somebody decides to do a little bit of grandstanding and do that, that I think actually hurts our kids' education here locally. A lot of people don't have money to go and buy books at bookstores. They go to the public library, and they should have full access to a wealth of information there.
Okay, we are out of questions. So thank you very much for everybody. Thank you to our sponsors, Fresno Land, League of Women Voters, the Maddy Institute, Valley Public Radio. Thank you to our wonderful reporters, Omar and Carrie. And especially thank you to our wonderful guests tonight, Mr. Quintero, Mr. Chavez. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.